Yes, I'd like to open the Leominster Planning Board meeting for the purpose of interviews, October 1st at 5:00. And our first interview is Elizabeth Wood. Elizabeth? Run into the hot seat.
It's not a bad seat unless it's in any area we don't like.
Okay. Good evening. Welcome to have you back.
Thank you.
Okay. We're gonna be making, hopefully we're making final decisions today or tomorrow. So, the board will be voting today. So, good luck.
Do you want her to explain?
Yeah, I'm gonna give her an opening statement and why you wanna be, what you think, how you be a good director for the city of Leominster and all your good words of wisdom. And prove yourself. When we have a board.
Yeah, we do, and there's, Elizabeth, we have one other member who couldn't be here tonight, but there's seven of us all together.
So you're on, you're on Elizabeth?
I'm on.
You're on.
I met some of you before. John's is our third time meeting. I met Sal and I met Fred, but I haven't met Patrick, Paul, and Carol. And I believe I haven't met...
I'm Stephanie Rayn, I'm the planning board.
And I'm Wendy Hurley, the HR director.
Okay, so we've talked to them.
We've spoken.
Okay. Nice to meet you.
Yes, thank you.
Yes Wendy.
Well, first I would say I'm really disappointed that I had to miss the Johnny Appleseed Festival. I had a Saturday meeting. It was the exact same time. And I've been hearing a lot of good things about it and reading its history and I think I could have gotten a lot of flavor of the town by going to that festival. So I'm sorry I missed it, but I'm happy to see that there are many other opportunities in Leominster for celebrating the community, so hopefully I could attend some of those coming up. I will say that I was also very impressed by Leominster. I live in Groton. A little bit about me, I've been in Massachusetts a year now. I got married and moved to Massachusetts to be where my husband's home state was. And so I, before that, I was in New Hampshire. If you've looked at my resume, you probably already know that, for about nine years. And so I've been familiarizing myself with Massachusetts for the last year. And I will say that I don't have a history of growing up around Leominster, but I've mentioned it to several people since I've been interviewing for the position, and everyone has great things to say about the city, so you've been doing a great job. I have one friend who works at Target in the pharmacy. She had good things to say. I have another friend who works for the Sentinel as a photographer. He spoke highly of your mayor, Jeff Porter, I don't know if you know him.
I've read the name. Yeah.
And I spoke to other town officials. I was at a downtown convention this afternoon, all morning, in this afternoon, in Lowell. And people there had good things to say about Leominster also. It's a very well-run city, and I think John telling me how long the tenure of the, plenty more members here speaks for itself, that people come here and they stay here and they don't turn over quickly, which is a great sign. So, the impression on me was very well. And also the impression that you could do GIS mapping, which is something that...
There he is. Leave it open, the, the, it's an open meeting.
Don't you keep your phone on? Don't you own the phone? Don't you turn it on? Don't you get in touch?
Uh, yeah, it's on my desk.
Elizabeth, have you met the mayor?
I have, I'm with the...
Hello Elizabeth? Do you keep your phone on?
It's on, but it's silent. Silent.
She's just making some opening remarks in case we get to know her.
So I was saying, my friend Jeff Porter spoke well of the mayor. He's a photographer for the Sentinel.
That's one.
That's one person.
But you've been here since 1994, and I think that's tremendous. I remember 1994, because that was the first year I ran my first ultra mar... No, it was the first year I ran my first ultra marathon. And so I remember that year very clearly. I was 14. So, that's a long time ago, and kudos to you for sticking it through that long. But I like...
You're older than Patrick.
I like that Leominster has public water and public sewer. I like that you've taken, taken a lot of time to put in a lot of good planning measures. I was proud to hear that you were a gateway city and that you got a grant to work on gateway procedures. And you have a lot of definitions in your zoning ordinance. I see that you define everything and are clear about that, so I guess there's not a lot of confusion when someone from the public comes through with something, because you can point them right, right to the zoning ordinance, right where it is. I like that. And I like that, as I was saying when you were walking in, that you have GIS in the department, that your former employer, or your former employee brought that in. And you'd be surprised that that, that's a cutting-edge tool, and since I've come into the profession in about 2005, 2006, it was, it was a cutting-edge tool, but you'd be surprised at how many cities and towns have not adopted GIS. It's cut from a lot of budgets in a lot of communities, and they don't use it, and I think they're missing out, but I'm happy to see that Leominster has embraced that. That's excellent. I, let's see, John will have to tell, well, I don't like speaking about myself and saying, "Oh, I'm great." You know, it's like really hard to do. But you asked me why I would be the best candidate for Leominster. Well, yep, you can see my age is a one factor. I'm not brand-new. I'm, I'm, I don't know if I'm older or younger than I look, I don't know, but I'm 38 next week. So I have had time to...
Happy birthday.
I know. I have had time in Columbus Day. I have had time to get my feet wet. I've had time to work in two different municipalities as their planner, and one as an associate planner in Wyoming. So I got the experience out west, in the western community, which was excellent. And then I had almost seven years in New Hampshire, in New England community, and then most recently...
It's open. She can, you can.
Most recently, I've been working for a regional planning agency, and we serve 40 different Massachusetts communities. So I've been getting very familiar with central Massachusetts and the processes and policies and politics of such. So, I've seen a lot, I've experienced a lot. I've, I've seen all kinds of, I realize that planning is so much more than what's in the books. You have to learn by experience. By getting back to my age, I have enough to get my feet wet, but I'm also not, unfortunately for me, I'm not ready to retire anytime soon, if ever. So I have a lot of years left to go to put into a community and shape it, mold it, and help realize the, the planning board's vision. And so that's a positive. But aside from age, I will say, I have had the opportunity to have some great mentors in my experience. My first planning director that I worked under, Robert Briggs, in Wyoming, he's, he went on to some bigger things. He went on to work in Cheyenne as a planning director, and then he went on to work as at the university. And he was a big believer in AICP certification and professional planning as a, as, as, planning, supporting planning as a profession. So he got me into researching all of the, the planning theory and planning laws and history, and keeping up to speed with current planning issues in the Planning Magazine, and keeping in touch with the American Planning Association. So, I've been involved with whichever association I was working, whichever region I was working in, I was involved with the state and the national planning organizations. So I believe in that. I think it's important to stay tuned to what's happening nationally. I think we learn from other communities. I don't think I know everything. I look to who's leading, to, for good examples, to bring to the community that I'm working in. I've made contacts all over the country, from being involved in National Planning Association. I had a planner from Georgia come visit me this summer, that I've stayed in contact with for, for a number of years. And I, I know people all over, I was heavily involved in New Hampshire because I was the state director for the Planning Association. It's not, not to be confused with the president. The state director is the liaison between the region, the tri-state region of Vermont, Maine, and New Hampshire, and the state of New Hampshire. So I would go to the regional meetings and report back to the state as to what was happening region-wide. And I also was in charge of putting on a conference with the tri, the, I know here you have the Southern New England Planners Association, and they're having a conference in Hartford coming up. Well, in, in, in New Hampshire, it's the Northern New England Planners Association. And I was involved for five years as their state director, and I put on that conference with over 200 people. And it worked out very well. It was in Portsmouth. People raved about it. It worked very well. And, I don't know, I could tell you that I, I'm a well-rounded planner. I'm not specialized in only zoning law. I'm not specialized in only subdivision review. I've seen the whole spectrum of what planning is, and I've had to perform in many areas. Right now, I'm working on a master plan for the town of Holden. They, you can look up on Facebook, the, the Town of Holden Master Plan, you can look up the Town of Holden Master Plan website, that's what I've been working on. And I've also been working on village center district bylaw. Bylaws, they're not ordinances, because they're for towns, not cities. Yeah, John, correct. John set me straight on that. So I've been doing a lot of projects, and I'm not afraid to take on something new that I've never heard of before, that I'm not, I'm not gonna turn my nose up and say, "I don't know how to do that." I'm gonna say, "Let's figure out how to do it. How do we accomplish this?" So, I don't know, I have exactly, I'll tell you, I have a meeting tonight, I apologize, in West Boylston for a village center bylaw. That's at 7 o'clock, so I have exactly...
We'll get you.
I'm happy to answer any questions.
Sure. I'll move around. Oh yeah.
If there's anything you're concerned about... I'm used to controversy, I'm used to being in the hot seat. You don't scare me with this, fair. I bring it on at this point.
Okay. We probably, me, Sal, and John asked you this question, but they didn't hear it. So, what do you feel is your greatest accomplishment? Why? And then, how would that accomplishment relate to this job? How do you, what do you think?
That's also kind of a trick question. Well, my greatest accomplishment is lasting seven years almost in one town, where the politics were extremely difficult, and where I saw many other staff members and board members leave because of the challenges politically. And I was able to stay through that, through thick and thin. I've been threatened to be sued. I've been threatened to be dismembered. I don't know about that.
That's true, okay.
I was able to survive, and I, and I'm not gonna speak to anybody's name or any certain circumstance, but I will say, I've been in, what, people wanna write books about difficult political situations with personalities and such, and I know in planning, you deal with, you deal with developers, you deal with engineers, you deal with the mayor. He's not listening.
I'm waiting for you to answer the question.
Okay, I was trying to get you to laugh. But I endured, and I survived, and I made it through that. And so now, any situation that I get into with any kind of difficult person, or challenging person, or demanding person, it doesn't faze me one bit, because I've been through what I think was arguably the most difficult in the state of New Hampshire. I'm gonna brag about that.
The mayor has no dismembering policies. Yeah, we don't do that. Well, we use them. So it might work you a little harder, and pieces are falling off.
Elizabeth, nice to meet you. I'm Carol Vittorio, so. So you're right, I've been on this board for, I think, all of us, except for Sal and John, were appointed by this mayor. And he's been mayor since you were 14 years old. So, and I've been on the board since, since that time, since 1994. And so my math is, and I, and I hope this doesn't scare you, but there's a point to my question. My math is, in the 24 years I've been on this board, we've had, or we've hired at least seven, different times, six directors. And I think, in my opinion, I think that's a lot, in 24 years. And it's been for a whole bunch of, a whole bunch of reasons why, but I guess my first question is, I have two questions, and they're somewhat unrelated, but my first one is, you know, you, you, you're 38 years old, so you have experience, but at the same time, you're 38 years old and maybe you wanna move on. But how, I mean, I know you can't predict the future, and you have no control over it, but what's your, if we hire you, what's your long-term goal? What are your goals here, and how long do you plan to be here?
Well, there's questions Wendy can't ask me, but I'll answer them anyway. I have a five-month-old infant, and a husband who works in Pittsburgh. So we want, we looked into the school system in Leominster. We found Johnny Appleseed schools were very good, so that made us happy. We were looking to buy a house in western Massachusetts, farther away. We live in Groton now. We're looking to be closer to Pittsburgh, and if I worked here, I currently work in Worcester. We were hoping to move more this direction, because the housing cost is just a reality. I also wanna be vested in my, these are all practical reasons, I'm a planner, so I'm a little practical. The Massachusetts state retirement is 10 years that you need to be, or I don't know if you have that, do you have that policy?
Part of the pension system.
Yeah, but you have to be working 10 years to be, to get your retirement. I'd like to have a retirement one day, so I'd like to put my time in. And I like realizing things in one community. I like, I was happy to see so many things come to fruition in New Hampshire. I, despite of the difficulty, I love the job. And I got to see so many of the ordinances that I put into place actually go through, to through fruition and come out over many years and see how they turned out, and that's very rewarding. I love my planning board back in Wyndham, and I, you know, I regularly see them, and I keep in touch with them. I'm a very loyal person. I would still be there if I had a tremendous opportunity that came up, that pulled me away from that job. A couple, I got to do consulting on the other side of the table for two years, and I got to travel all around the country. And that was fun for two years, until I got married and wanted a family, and then now we wanna be more in one place. My husband also, he's in the Air Force, in addition to being in the, he's in the Guard, in addition to being, working in Pittsburgh. He goes to West...
Westover.
No, no, Westfield. I get the West...
There's two, there's Westover and Westfield.
Yep, he goes to Westfield. And so we wanna be where he can go there on the weekend. So we wanna stay, and he's actually even talking about maybe working there two days a week. And so he would, if he switched jobs. We're talking, we're trying to talk about our long-term future. So I mean, that's more information, I think, than I'm supposed to say, but those are like my personal reasons for wanting to be in one place and stay. I would have stayed in Wyoming, had that worked out, because I absolutely loved my job in Wyoming. But in 2008, the economy crashed, and we went from a department of six to a department of two in a matter of a few months, and the option to work there, my, the position I had has still not been restored. So that was an option to stay. And I may have stayed in New Hampshire, except that I had that opportunity to, I worked on an article that maybe some of you read, where I interviewed all the candidates that were running for the presidential office. And I read an article that, it was published in Planning Magazine. And in doing so, I met a lot of people and got offered a job to do planning nationwide. But it was a bait and switch, because I was hired to be a planner, and then they had me working on political campaigns, which was a lot of fun, and I learned so much, a lot of which I think applies to planning that I wouldn't have learned otherwise. I had to learn so many different regulations for different states, and meet deadlines, and be accurate with my information under tight constraints. Working in North Dakota, California, Iowa, North Carolina, Delaware, all in the course of a year. And I didn't stay with that, because I wanted to settle down and be with my family, and I wanted to be a planner, not a political consultant. So, I've figured out, I guess I'll give you a very long-winded answer on this, but, and you wanna know that I would stay. And, you know, I've heard enough good things about Leominster to know that it's a good place that I would like to stay, so far. Now, of course, you don't really know until you start working, but from what I've heard, it's a good, it's a good, I've done my research too. Can I follow up with that?
Sure. So my question, I said it was unrelated, but somewhat, somewhat related, and, and maybe this is something that the mayor's going to be asking you too, but I'm going to jump, jump in and ask. So one of the, one of the, this is at least my opinion, I can't, I'm not speaking on behalf of the board, but having been here for 24 years and working with the mayor for that period of time, and I know, I know how he is. So although we hire you, right, we hire you as a planning board that's in the charter, you'll probably work with the chair more closely. I'm the vice chair, when he's not here, we'll, you know, I'll be around, but, but he's, he's the one who's gonna see you every day, and his staff, and his department heads, and you're gonna be the department head. So not only is your job going to be to, you know, take care of us and be the city planner, but you also have to be a manager of staff. And one of the issues, again, just my opinion, but from my observations, has been, one of the reasons probably for the turnover is that some planners who come in don't have really that second-hand of being a manager and being a boss. And making sure people come in on time, make sure, make sure they, they leave later, make sure they do their job, and make sure that they meet their goals, that the, that the mayor is setting, not only for the city of Leominster, but for staff. So, do you think you can also have that managerial position, notwithstanding that you're going to be the planner for the city of Leominster? To be that boss, be able to answer to him, answer to us in a wholly different way, and then being able to manage, manage your staff, no matter if they're a staff of three, or a staff of 13, or a staff of 30? And if you can, can you tell us what experience you have in planning?
I do, I'll tell you my experience. In Wyoming, I had absolutely none, starting out at my first job. So we'll skip that. Moving on to New Hampshire, I was second-in-command of the department, so whenever this, just like your vice chair, when John isn't here, I was in charge of the department when the community development director wasn't there, when she was out of the office, or had to be in a meeting, or was out for vacation, or for whatever reason. And she and I worked together very, very, very closely, and we had a department of, I'll say, is seven. And so I would do as much as helping a lot with the training, every time somebody needed a new skill. I also helped, this isn't dealing personnel, but I helped look over the budget twice a year to make sure we were in line with that. But most recently, I've gotten a lot of skills in working for the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission, because there are, the number changes, because they've hired new people, but we'll say roughly eight people below me. I'm not their direct manager, so I'm not in charge of their reviews, but I'm in charge of managing their workloads and delegating out work, figuring who has what skills, figuring out who can help me on certain aspects, aspects of the master plan, or my village center district zoning ordinances, and measuring their workloads, like can they handle something more, can they, is this a little too much for them right now? Is this something that might be better suited for another employee to work on? And then following up with them to make sure they meet their deadlines and come to all their meetings, and like tonight, I have a coworker who's coming, and I texted him from the meeting today with directions as to what he needed to do to be prepared for tonight's meeting. So I've done that. I haven't done employee reviews, I haven't done that, but I will say, I've done a lot of, it's not the same thing. I've done so many reviews for site plans and subdivisions and building permits, and I've worked with different developers on their projects, so I'm not afraid to say, "Look, this isn't how it's supposed to be." I, I don't sugarcoat it and say, "Oh, you know, it's okay," you know. I, I'm very diplomatic, and I communicate. I don't let things fester, as you would say. I like to point it out, and I can be very direct. I've become very New England, I'm not a native New Englander, but I've become very direct in able to say, you know, this. And, and, you know, in all of my doing that, I haven't offended anybody, or maybe I have, but I've gotten a lot of feedback that everybody likes working with me. That's one of my number-one compliments I would get on my reviews every year, from working in New Hampshire for seven years, was that the public and my coworkers enjoy working with me. So despite of all my no's, and you can't do this, and it has to be done this way, people still respect me. I got a lot of respect. One of my, told John about this, so this is a repeat for him, and I think Sal and Fred were there when I brought this story up. But I had a coworker who came in, who was under me, and I was second-in-command in the department at the time in, in New Hampshire, who was probably twice my age, and didn't wanna be told what to do by a younger person. And it took a long time, well, a long time, meaning a couple of months, to earn his respect, to where he started coming to me for, with questions. At first, he had wanted nothing to do with anything I had to say, but eventually, based on our interactions and our day-to-day before, we built up a relationship, and he came to come to me for advice for things, so that went well.
So you don't mind having to call somebody in, and sort of be diplomatic and respectful?
Yeah, you do it privately.
Tell them that there's a particular problem, working with the HR director, and you might not get the Christmas card, or you might, you know, the invite to the barbecue, but you don't mind doing those kinds of things? Because those are hardest things, is having to do, right, I mean, that's the hardest things, you know, nobody wants to do it, right? I mean, so usually, leave it to the HR director, nobody really likes to do those. But as a manager, you're compensated for, you're the department head of your department, and I think the question is, do you mind doing those things?
No, I don't.
That's, right? That's a hard thing to do. Everybody likes to be liked. Even I once time, liked to be liked.
Not in the planning world. I told John, it's not Burger King, have it your way every day, something like that. It's, it's not that way in the planning world.
One of the things I think that's good here, and you talked about sort of being in an environment where it wasn't fun, and you looked at it as an accomplishment, because you were able to focus on your work and get it done, and not sort of get into it, the board's been very non-political. They haven't, you know, they've really stayed out of the whole fray. This has really been an opportunity for people to come here and make their case, whatever it might be, and do it on the merits of it, but also the ordinances and the state laws and, you know, subdivision controls. So, they've been very fair to everybody that come, including myself. When they come here, you know you're gonna get a fair shake. I don't think I've ever had to call and have a personal conversation with any planning member about a project or a person that's coming in, because I've always known they'll be fair. That's, I tell everybody, it's like, you'll never be treated any more fair than coming to the planning board. So that's a sort of a bonus.
Yeah, I don't play favorites.
It's a big, because I have most, a lot of communities where people say, "Oh, man, it's a tough process." And that's not the way. Everybody comes here, they're treated fairly and respectful, and I've never had to have a conversation with anybody about it. So that's sort of a bonus for people, because it creates a good work environment. And then when you're on the front line, representing the board in the city, you know, you don't have to play that little political game, and I think that, there's some value to that. The other thing is, I think we all know, everybody brings certain, it sounds like you have a lot of qualities to bring, and not everybody's perfect, they don't have them all. But we're really good around here about everybody helping out. And at first, and it's just an environment, it's sort of old government, it used to happen, is the toughest thing I hear from everybody is, you know, there were silos everywhere. And that's every town, every city, but we've seemed to overcome that. Everybody, sometimes difficult to even figure out which department head is which department head. Bill, for instance, has stayed here forever, working on the IT system. We had some sort of a problem today with the IT system. The guy's the assessor. In the past, I couldn't get the assessor to do anything else besides assessing. And that was it. You know, and he didn't really feel he was responsible to anybody. That's not the way anymore. Everybody's really helpful. The other thing is, there's a lot of experience and knowledge already here, you know, some of the people have already worked here that, what you don't know, they know. And, and I think the fourth thing is, we really work hard to build relationships in the city. You know, nobody looks at, nobody looks at things like taxes anymore, nobody even, it's even harder to get anybody to read emails anymore. So we've kind of taken the approach of really good customer service, which starts here for a lot of people, in this boardroom, but it's also the interaction that people have when they, they come to the city or call on the phone. And I don't know the last time I've gotten a complaint. It's, it's always compliments that we've... It's, it's always compliments that we've, we've gotten. In the last development review board meeting, we were here and, you know, two of the three people over here said, I can't believe this process. This is great for me. People spend a lot of money. And a lot of times, small businesses that are coming through the door, they might owe a lot of money. You know that old saying, if you think it's gonna cost you $25,000 to open a business, probably gonna cost you 50. And we try to, we have a, um, technical review process, did you go over that in the meetings?
Yes, we do.
Familiar with that.
Yeah, so people come in and we bring all the departments and we try to get to people so that they, if there's any sort of heads up sort of things. But it's really the customer service and the relationships that we build because it helps us down the road for other businesses. It's just, you know, we try to treat people the way we want to be treated. So there's nobody coming in here saying, this is the most horrible experience we have.
That sounds like a great environment.
Everything else can be taught. I mean, you know, the tough decisions that you were just asked, like, some people don't like being the bad person. So let things go on and on and on until maybe, you know, somebody else jumps in and says, hey, listen, you know, the other people in the building are complaining. And then I think you touched on, you know, I have a, and if it's five months old, right? I think we've really, you know, expanded when there's a family member that has an illness or somebody has a kid and we know things happen.
I have grandma who's.
Yeah, I know, but.
And I have my husband, and sometimes it's me, but I do have help.
But we've been good about it too, is what I'm saying, is that we haven't been like, okay, you know. Somebody's got a sick mom or somebody's got a sick per, we've always been flexible about it. We don't follow anybody around right to the second, but, you know, it's a give and take thing. And I, and I think that's the other value of, of working for the city is, you know, we've really stretched it. Whereas everybody had to be here at 8:30, nobody can leave before, you know. We've, we've been really good about that. And some people come back to make up hours and make it up, you know, on another day or whatever it might be. So as far as that goes, I think for a working mom, that's, that's also something good. The last thing is, we're sort of in the, we live a lot of things, um, we bought a lot of land. We don't have a whole lot of subdivisions. The things I think that come, well, they can speak for themselves, but I, you know, they look through the list of things on the agenda. They're sometimes more complex now because there isn't very much land left, you know, it's all bought up or built on. And as a city, we're sort of at that junction now where we're ready for the master plan. Like, okay, open space plan, we've done the parks, the open space, the schools, buildings, capital improvements, there, there, there. Now it's time to kind of tell the community or ask the community, engage in them in, okay, what do you, like Holden? Where do you want to be, where do you wanna go from here? Is it just 122, 109 in the middle and we're just gonna go up into our neighborhoods and that's it? Or, you know, what do we want for the future? So that's kind of, uh, uh, you know, view from 30,000.
Long-term planning.
Yeah, it's, so it's actually a good time because a lot of the other planners, in fairness to them, it was reactive. It was plans coming through the door, a lot going on. We've finally reached that stage where we can actually do some, some planning. And a lot of those plans never got a chance. They, they were too busy, you know? We have one, we have Walmart project coming through, Target coming through at the same time, redevelopment of the mall. I mean, it was just coming at us, who has time for planning? Finally, you know, we reached that point. So I'm trying to add in all those little perks there that make it an interesting thing.
So tell me what the most, I'm gonna put you on the spot, what's the most challenging or difficult?
For you?
Aspect of the job for the planner?
Well, try to understand, you know, when, when the charter is, everything's orchestrated, it was done at such a time when the mayor was part-time, the, the very few full-time staff. In fact, if you look far enough back, there wasn't even a planning director, it was a planning board. And, you know, they would come in and do their thing. Just understanding the sort of, I think what, what Carol said is the planning board and then is the day-to-day stuff. And once you get that, it's really easy to figure out. It's not a power grab, it's just, you know, I'm gonna be with you, working with you, you know, 40 hours a week. And then you're gonna shift hats, kind of update them on what's going on in that 40 hours and then work on the, you know, the planning board, the agenda stuff. But it's all one, really. You know what I mean, it's all one. But that's the biggest challenge, so people don't get it. They're like, I, I, I don't know what I'm, I don't know how I report to them, you know? So it's the day-to-day, right? I mean, it's complex today, that's why we have an HR director, you know, things are complex.
You're a city.
But we're a big team. I like to look at it as, somebody needs help, you're a planner, you have great qualities, I can see it, can hear from what you said. We want, we want you to jump in, we wanna be able to ask you, not have somebody say, well, it's not my area. Because, um, it's really that team effort's brought us to where we're at now. Good people, really good people willing to, you know, not, every, we're gonna have a department meeting Wednesday and we'll bring up a couple of new projects and I guarantee you, we're all gonna go, oh, no. But you know what, they're just kidding. The reality is, you know, they'd like a break, but the reality is, they, they look at it as a challenge. And because they get along so well, everyone will jump in where necessary and they'll pull it off. So there's a question of, do you fit in there or not? Um, and, you know, and what you don't know, there's nothing to be fearful of because you can learn all that. That's what those planning groups are for, you find a mentor, someone, another planner that helps you through it, pick up the phone. There's probably 200 years of experience here in, in planning, so.
Just sound like.
That's my age, not mine.
So that's, I mean, it's not really complicated, it really isn't. And you said you've worked other places, so you know different personalities.
I expect it.
Yeah, you know, and you know what the other biggest challenge is, every planning director says, CDBG. Can you tell them, we'll get half a million dollars, it takes $250,000 to administer it. That's, to me, that seems to be the thing everyone, when they leave, say, I ask them like, so what are you thinking? They're like, oh, man, that CDBG program's tough. You know, just administering it, it's, it's, like I said, we got half a million, it's $250,000 worth of administering. It's foolish, but you know, we do it because we do it.
Take on that program.
Other than that, who can't love the fact that you're in a city that we've already got a lot done? You know, the downtown is just about full, it's a few entities, but not many. And housing prices are up. I've got an offer on my house that was, I don't know, $5,000, $10,000 more than, I didn't even thought anybody would pay for it. It's a good economy right now, you know, I, 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 I don't think there are a whole lot of challenges. It's, it's really kind of, you know, we're down to how many, two people, right, two candidates?
Yep.
Yeah, down to two, I just wanted to give you.
You wouldn't be here unless you were a good candidate, you know what I mean?
That's right.
Thank you.
We've gone through the list and we work. I just wanna work on her schedule.
I have, I have 20 minutes.
But we have a schedule also.
I'm just.
Okay, and you wanted to be at Holden's, but I just wanted to, uh, open it up. I don't, you, you fall?
As long as we just.
You upset?
Well, again, I'll ask questions if we have time for them, but I.
Yeah, we got time, we got two minutes and I just wanted us.
Time, you think there's seven?
It's Wes Boilston and it's 7 o'clock.
Oh, 15 minutes.
No, then I have plenty of time.
Wes Cleef.
Well, we have, we have another.
We have another candidate.
We could ask one or two questions.
Yeah, you ask one, Pat asks one, we'll just cut on and I'll finish it.
Everyone has talked about the past, let me ask you a question about the future.
Future, okay.
So assuming you were chosen for the position, describe what you do in your first six months. You know, transitioning into the position, assessing operations, thinking about where you wanna go. You must have given some thought to what you'd like to do with the role.
Well, I, I first of all like to spend my time getting to know all the players. You've gotta know all the staff, you've gotta know all the developers, you've gotta know the board members. And then there's your key members of the public that you have to know. Um, and in doing that, you know, I, I come in following what the set rules are, what, what, what's already in existence. What, what are the ordinances, state laws, if no question, I have to follow those. Um, and then you take notes as you go. If, if, if there's something, you have a hiccup, you take a note. Uh, I used to keep a stack of, of scratch paper by my desk. And you write down, okay, the, the board didn't like this part, this, this part of the ordinance. The, we, we seem to have a lot of people winning variances on this. Um, the staff is complaining about the old printer in the back of the room, it's not up to speed. Keeping notes of all the little things, though, I don't wanna come in with an agenda. Um, I really wanna hear first what the tune is. I don't have an agenda. My agenda is to be a good planner and to do what the planning board, you're appointed by the mayor. I'm not, you know, I'm here, I'm here to act out what you want. So I need to hear from everybody as to what they want first before I come in with, um, an agenda. But, you know, as I see needs, as I, as I get my feet wet and I, as I see needs, I, I take those notes and then I bring them up to the board. You know, I, I don't know exactly how it works here, but if I say, oh, you know what, our subdivision regs, this worked 20 years ago, but you were really in a big hurry and you missed this key point, I think we need to like tweak this.
Thank you for that.
Okay.
I'm fine, thank you.
You're fine.
You know.
Go ahead, Seth.
And you said a lot of things in your preamble that, that would probably fall under the syllabus, and we've talked. So, you know, I have a good understanding of your background and all the things we've talked about in the first interviews. But just off the cuff, you know, this competition for the position. What makes you stand out and what differentiates you and why should we hire you?
Well, I can say I'm very dynamic. I've worn so many different hats. I've faced numerous staffing shortages and had to cover, uh, 40 hours worth of work in 20 hours and not get a thing wrong. And, um, I've had to go into so many meetings with you, you know, you always want to have preparation, you wanna be where you can be. But based on the time constraints and the number of meetings you have, you can't always, um, put as much preparation as you want. But you have to go there and it has to run well and it has to, to go, I've, I've gotten very good at doing things on the fly if I have to. I will say you'll like working with me, um, and that goes a long way because, um, you'll feel comfortable coming up to me and, and telling me, you, you're like, Elizabeth, we didn't really like that. And, and I'll be like, okay, and I won't, and I'll be open ears. I won't come back at you and be defensive and, and saying, why didn't, you know? And that goes a long way, it's a good working relationship. I will say that, uh, everything I've done has ended up in success. You know, when I was in Wyoming, I, I applied for a national award and we won and we had the governor there, coming to get the award and national representatives from the American Planning Assistance Station flying from DC, from, from New Mexico, from Arizona to get the award. Um, when I was in Wyndham, I wrote that article that ended up in, I, two articles actually, that got into Planning Magazine that everybody was very excited about. I presented at the national conference and, um, got good reviews on, on my presentation at the, at the national conference. So, um, I don't know, I'm always looking for new ways to make the city shine and to, to bring out, recognize other people. I'm, I've been good at that. And, um, I don't know, I don't know what I would find in Lemonster until I start looking around a little closer. But, um, I would look for ways to, to bring Lemonster into, into a shining limelight.
Great, thank you, basically.
Okay, the last one that I wanna ask you is, do you have a question of us that you're looking for?
I asked, I asked the mayor what his most difficult thing was, um, about the job. I would like to know from the board what you think the most difficult part of the job is.
John.
Yeah, John, John, oh, yeah, see, it's all thanks, thanks on me all the time.
You seem to not say it's that hard. I, I, planning, planning is a difficult field, it's not a profession that you get into with looking for an easy way out.
I think it might be people, and, and Steph can attest to this, so like, feel free to speak up, Steph, because you, you're, you're like. I think it might be the people who come in, if there's a controversial plan, you'll have people who will just walk in and they'll wanna see the plan and then they'll start arguing, I don't want the, you know, they'll, they'll be, you know, with site plan review, as John always says, once in a while, but not often because people kind of get frenzied about it. We're the Board of Permitted Uses, right, as opposed to the Zoning Board of Appeals, they go to them for non-permitted uses. So we're kind of like, as you know, we police plans and we put conditions on plans, et cetera. But people come in and say, well, this shouldn't be here at all, but if it's a site plan with adequate parking and lighting and snow storage and, and it's, you know.
Meets the regs.
It meets all the regs, then, you know, we're gonna give it to them. And certainly we, we review the site, we review site plan, the technical review notes and the department head's notes and we'll add conditions and there's certain things we can do. But people come in all up in arms over that, you'll be, you'll, you'll get interrupted constantly, I think that's.
I like that.
That's one of them, that's good, and you're gonna have to deal with the public. Yeah, I mean, so you, so that's probably the most, and, and also, and I say this tongue-in-cheek because they, if they're watching, they know who they are. And also certainly developers and certain, certain engineers who come in, who know the city, who've been here all, and they know the regs and they, and they're doing their job, but, you know, and you'll, you'll see there'll be friendly, relatively friendly debates in, in the, in, during our hearings. But they'll come to you first, some of those developers or their engineers saying, well, I know what, we have to do one, two and three and four, but you know what, we don't really have to do number three. So it's gonna be your job to say, well, explain that and why is that? And you might have to call John or me and bounce ideas, like he, like he or she doesn't wanna have to do everything on the list and they're giving their reasons why, is this true or is this not true and, you know.
We also have a solicitor's office that represent, that has somebody that specializes in everything, if not multiple people. I mean, we have multiple people that do HR for us, mostly one. And that's a big help, right?
Yeah, so if you need a legal, you know, if you need a legal question or a technical question, you can go. And I'm, I'm an attorney, sometimes they come to me and ask me, and sometimes I think I'll absolutely know the answer, doesn't mean I'm right. And I'll, but if, but if it's something simple, I can probably answer it during a meeting. But otherwise, it happened the other day and I said to the acting director, well, this is what I think, but maybe you should ask, you know, request the mayor's office, you have to go through the mayor's office to be able to ask for the city solicitor, uh, Copman Page, who now go by KP Law.
KP.
To ask that question, to answer the question that you may have, a select legal question. But anyway, that's my opinion as to what is probably the most challenging thing on the planning end of things, or people coming in, the public and the petitioner and the engineer coming in.
But it goes a long way to spend a few minutes with somebody who's concerned. You know, they, they've lived there all their life and they're concerned about a project. Maybe their, other neighbors bite them all up, so they come down here and they get a chance to talk to you. You walk them through the thing, explain it to them and, you know, there aren't huge amounts of people that come to these meetings because most of the time they can get their answers before it turns into, you know, we gotta move the meeting to the auditorium, so.
Yeah, there's many, there's been a lot of times where people will call and I'll come into the office, we'll sit down and we can lay people's fears up front and say, okay, this, okay, you don't like this, how about if we put this condition on it? If they get something, you know, then we can work it out. So we're, we're pretty flexible, and that's what we try, we try to work with the people.
We've been through the casino, we've been through rezoning, we've been through the malls, we've been changing the zoning. So, three times down a jungle road to accommodate, you know, the mall, then mixed use, then retail.
Still getting pieces that need to be adjusted.
So there are many challenges at this point, it seems easy. That mergers of the hospital, rezoning of the hospital, I mean, all that's, all those things were big, they were huge.
They were huge.
Maybe we'll find more when we start.
There will, there'll be something, there's gotta be something.
Something new. The world changed, I mean, it's good.
The projects get more complex because of what's available.
Right.
Like I was saying, and, and.
I drive, I drove by Elm Street, there's a two-finger.
Answering.
Elm Street, oh, yeah.
You know, I, I liken that back to anybody who's appointed on this board for the first year or two. You never even ask the question to send them because you have to soak everything in and learn it and figure out.
It's like learning a new language.
Yeah.
It is.
And, and it's the same, you know, so, you know, some of that'll be a challenge.
Okay, I think, I think we're all good here.
Nice to meet you.
I'm gonna thank you again.
Thank you.
Oh, you got plenty of time to get there, don't play that.
Yeah, you're not.
Get after that.
I won't get a speeding ticket. Thank you. And so you're, you're working on making your decision by tomorrow, you said?
But tonight will be with.
So it's not three more interviews and.
No, this is.
See now, you're worrying already, don't worry.
We're gonna plan my schedule. Thanks for that.
Leave your phone on, leave your phone on.
Thank you.
You get that?
It's on, it's on. It's on my desk, I was here.
Good place, but I wanted to tell you.
Just keep it outside.
It's okay. Would you like me to grab Eric?
Yeah, yes.
I thought you were doing an hour a piece because that's what's on my.
No, it was only 45 minutes.
I don't know, I just wish.
Well, you said, you said you had, you had the Swiss meeting meeting, right?
Yeah, but I watched it out because I thought, you know, given each an hour, because it was two people.
Oh, 40, I was told 45.
Right.
But I was told 45 minutes.
Right there, thank you.
Okay.
It's like church, they all over an hour, it's not complaining.
Well, then you get the priest and the frisbee assistant that comes in and gets it done in 10 minutes.
Yeah, yeah. Hi, I'm Dean.
Mayor, pleasure to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
I have a piece out.
Good to see you.
Hi, Eric, I'm Wendy Hurley.
Oh, hi, Wendy, I finally have a name to face, yes. Face the name, yeah. Introduce you as well in person, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, introduce yourself, we'll go around. Well, once the friend comes back, Fred.
Fred took a break.
I didn't meet Fred last time, I didn't meet Fred last time, so.
Right.[1762.98]
Yeah.
That's right.
That's good.
That's right.
Patrick Pearl, Eric, how you doing? How's it, pleasure to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
And Paul Weiser, you're on. Okay, so thanks, Paul, nice to meet you.
Paul's brother.
And I'm Carol, also, nice to see you.
Nice to meet you, Carol, as well.
Okay, we got you in the hot seat now.
You do, yep.
So you work in Athol now, right?
Correct, yeah, 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 I'm in Athol.
Did you have any new build tech, project up there with Market Basket or you can?
I wish I could claim credit for that.
No, no, just kidding.
No, no, I actually, no, I mean, credit to the EDIC up there, they really were pushing that property originally for more industrial development. But you know, the market wasn't bearing any more industrial parks, especially that far west. And you know, I heard a great story actually, how Mr. Demoulin actually came out there and, you know, kinda just felt that there was an opportunity for Market Basket that further left. Cuz there wasn't much between Gardner and Greenfield. And took a chance on it and I guess it's a rest of history. It's really taken off now, the theater, Hobby Lobby and other, so things still coming as well, yeah.
Well, welcome, yeah. I opened the the first question and, you know, just thought to give you an opportunity to give us your opening statement. On why you wanna be here and what, and why we should hire you as the next director for the city of Leominster. So, you're on.
I appreciate that opportunity, you know, I moved up to this area in two thousand and five, originally to become the Aspham Town Planner, which my intention was stated for many years. Unfortunately, the Great Recession, you know, took a hit on that community, being a, you know, a community with such a strong residential tax base. And I've been kinda trying to find my place ever since, you know, I had to make some hard decisions when cuts were gonna be made or full time or part time. So I actually escaped up to Keene for a while work, but you know, I'm based in Pittsburgh with my family. And you know, since I've been up to this area, I've kinda got to know Leominster, I actually lived here for a few years myself. And just, you know, exciting to see what was happening here, I mean, it's great location, one ninety, Route Two. You know, I met with John one-on-one and met with Sal for the second time and got to know some of what's happening in the community, some of the tools you have at your disposal, you've been using. Like with the industrial parks, you'd be able to have the, develop, put the infrastructure in and there had to be so much industrial development, you know, job creation as well as retail, which are jobs, but not as high paying. And then, you know, we have a beautiful, you know, hillside with most of it protected for water supply protection. And we had some new village type center zoning tools in place, that's led to the, you know, Mr. Whitney taking a chance by redeveloping a property just down the road, the new YMCA. Does a member, now they're actually in the other factory across the street renovating that and that's, that's amazing to see that. And you know, I still, and I still feel a lot of potential, I think there's still more that could be, be happening, I mean, with the downtown, I love the downtown, people downtown. But you know, I still see potential for more restaurants and diversity, love to be part of, you know, to make that happen for the community moving forward in the next ten plus years.
Okay.
What do you feel is your greatest accomplishment? Why? And how will that encompass into this job that you're doing? And how how can that relate?
Yeah, one of my accomplishments is a little earlier in the career, but you know, Mashpee, town in the Cape, they hadn't had, actually had a master plan, you know, many years prior to that, into the seventies. And you know, so I actually was part of a team, myself and the boss, at the time, the Town Planner, to get the master plan done and approved by the, there's a Cape Cod Commission Act, a little special power to the Cape communities. And but also, there's some more funding times, master plan. But they actually had to get the plant, master plan approved by town meeting and had to be certified by Cape Cod Commission. And so before I left Mashpee, the first time I was there, we were able to accomplish that that master plan. The second big project, when we were down there, was trying to get some adult use entertainment zoning in place. You know, Mashpee's actually told the story the last time, how they had one of the only, they're like a strip club on Cape Cod, there's rumors another one, people were upset. And trying to get the zoning passed and teaching people was really a a challenge as well, too. And but at the end of the day, we got town meeting voters to pass that town, town meeting. A little more recent times, I would say, when I was working at Mount Jesus Regional Planning Commission, we were trying to get some zoning that changed in Devens. And many know how Devens is governed, there's a super town meeting structure where all the three host towns, the main part of Devens, main base, had to approve any zoning changes. And I was working down at Shirley on some land behind the Shirley Middle School complex over there. And well, they wanted to maybe have more senior housing in particular, but maybe a little more mixed use than what the zoning allowed. They called it Village Center, but it was really allowing just office institutional uses. And so we finally went through and I was there for three years and got them to basically take the zoning to the next step. And I remember reading in the paper in the last couple of years, how that's not the plan, get senior housing there, which is really needed for the town of Shirley. So I felt that my work was kinda, you know, nice to see, read the paper and seen accomplishment happen, that wasn't easy.
Um, so, Eric, I have two questions for you, nice to meet you, I'm Carol.
Yeah, nice to meet you tonight.
Um, so what is, can you tell us a little bit about what your long-term goal is here in, as a planner for the city of Leominster? How, what's what's your plan in terms of how long, I mean, I obviously can't predict the future or anything, but how how long you plan to stay in, as a, as a planner for the city of Leominster? If you're offered the job, you know, one of the reasons I say that, I've I've been on the board for twenty-four years, for as long as the mayor has been the mayor of Leominster. And as you've known, you live, you live only in Pittsburgh, so you know how long he's been mayor.
Yeah.
And I think other than Sal and John, he's appointed all, the rest of us, along with Tom Carrigan, who's not here tonight. And so I, if my math is correct, I think of the twenty-four years that I've been here, we've had seven hirings of six different planners. And to me, that averages out to four years per planner, and some of them were here like three days, if I recall, one. So it doesn't even really average out to that, but to me, if it was a clear four years for each of them, to me, that's not even long enough. Cuz there's a, there's a lot going on, you have to be committed to the city. So that's my first part of my question is, how committed are you to the position and to the city of Leominster?
I am fully committed, my daughter's in second grade in Pittsburgh and, you know, we're not planning on leaving the area, we want to see her to go through the school system and hopefully go off to college. You know, I'm kind of at the, you know, mid-range of my career, you know, I qualify for pensions till some years after the next, you know, next decade. And thus, you know, my commitment's to remain to work in this area and like I said, I, you know, feel like there's a lot of things, exciting opportunities on Leominster and they've been happening. But I'd like to be part of that even, you know, make an increase going forward and remain committed to, you know, to that window of ten years. And my daughter's in college and I'm ready to finally get a, you know, retirement stage.
Okay, that's 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 great, so the second part of my question is sort of related to that and I hope this doesn't scare you away. But I think, I think, and again, I'm not speaking on behalf of the board, just from my observations, having been on the board for as long as I have. I think one of the issues with the turnover might be, not only are you going to be the city planner and and oversee our our planning board meetings and review site plans and subdivisions and any type of special permits or anything within the zoning ordinance, but you also have to be a manager and you have to manage your staff. And so, and you, and you, although, you know, you you work with us, you're also, I mean, you're gonna work with the mayor and 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 you're gonna see him every day, he's gonna be with you every day. And with us, it's not, although it is hands-on certainly with the chair, but I mean, you, he, you're gonna be, you're gonna be his department head, you're gonna be part of his staff. And he's going to look to you to oversee the staff and be a team player and be the head of the team. So can you tell us what your experience is in managing a staff and making sure people come on time, stay later if they have to, make sure they get their work done on time during the course of the day? Can you tell us what your experience is with that?
Yeah, so currently in Athol, I have one full, well, she's only part-time for twenty-four hours, which increases her a little bit, staff. But you know, she's under my supervision directly, so I need to make sure, yeah, that, you know, she's getting things done. She's a little bit the way you guys have things up here, she's more focused on the CBG clerical side of things with some planning assistance. And her number one responsibilities are the CBG program coordination. And so I gotta, I need to make sure she's up to speed, you know, things on time, cuz, you know, especially with working DHCD, we can't afford to fall behind. We wanna be in good grace with the Department of Housing Development as DHCD. And and then we also have a CBG actually consultant who I kind of, you know, oversee, but you know, you know, she's, she's an expert in the field. So I kind of, you know, take her, what she says and make sure we're moving us along. And if she's come up, I need to talk to the staff, you know, my assistant, to make sure, you know, what are the issues, let me work through them, you know. And you know, she has more questions, maybe make sure she's comfortable to speak to me on anything that she's concerned about, I don't want her to hold anything in. Both in Maynard and and Aspham, we actually kind of had a clerk position that was kind of partly under my responsibility. She's a land use clerk that kind of helped building, health, zoning, conservation as well as the planning board. And Maynard, I think, had like a part-time and a half equivalent, a full, yeah, one point five equivalent, if you will, for that. And so my, my role is, you know, carving out to make sure that the person could assist the planning board, agenda development, anything that comes in correspondence wise is processed. And you know, that was my responsibility, oversee that and make sure, you know, we communicate well, you know, have meetings, not, you know, try to make some regular scheduled meetings, you know, weekly or if needed, monthly at a minimum. And make sure, you know, be able to have the communication and everything's being completed, that needs to be completed.
Yeah, so if you need a legal, you know, if you need a legal question, a technical question, you can go, and I'm I'm an attorney, sometimes they come to me and ask me.
And sometimes I think I'll absolutely know the answer, doesn't mean I'm right, no. But if it's something simple, I can probably answer it during a meeting, but otherwise, it happened the other day and I said to the acting director, well, this is what I think, but maybe you should ask, you know, request the mayor's office. You have to go through the mayor's office to be able to ask for the city solicitor. Co- Coleman Page, who now go by KP Law.
KP.
To ask that question, to answer the question that you may have, a select legal question. But anyway, that's my opinion as to what is probably the most challenging thing on the planning end of things, or people coming in, the public and the petitioner and the engineer coming in.
But it goes a long way to spend a few minutes with somebody who's concerned, you know, they've lived there all their life and they're concerned about a project. Maybe their, other neighbors bite them all up, so they come down here and they get a chance to talk to you. You walk them through the thing, explain it to them and, you know, there aren't huge amounts of people that come to these meetings, cuz most of the time, they can get their answers.
You have a lot of experience here, no question, in a lot of different areas. Your work history is like every couple of years, and and I figured maybe you should, you know, people look at it, maybe they wanna ask you the question. But I think it's only fair to ask you the question so you can answer it, you know, it seems to be a lot of two and three years and four and. And it's been mostly these people here, the whole time I've been here, right, for the most part, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. One might wanna know, so.
No, no, I just, I expect that, that question would come up and, you know, my intention was, I came up here in two thousand and five to work for Aspham. I was hoping to stay there for for a long time, I kind of knew already a little bit of my history, living after that time period. And you know, was gonna hope to continue work for many years and then on the one day in September, you know, actually, it was October first now, but it was a mid-September day. And Tom Andrew pulled me in my office, like, you know, before we read the paper, Eric, that's what, you know, the selectmen said last night, that, you know, there's gonna be cuts or elimination of jobs. And you're gonna see the planners will be one of them. So I had kind of had no choice other than that, you know, I don't want, you know, I was fortunate during the Great Recession to always have work. And I enjoyed my work at Mount Jesus Regional Planning Commission greatly, I was there for three and a quarter years or so there. But during that time, I had a child and I was not getting a raise at all, not even a penny. And that just wasn't economical to myself and, you know, I've been kind of trying to find myself a little bit since then. And, you know, I do enjoy working in Athol overall, but, you know, as I, I think I explained this to John Sal and Fred last time, you know. Obviously, Leominster's closer to my house, it'd be great to be closer to to my, you know, family if something comes up. But also, I kind of like, you know, look at it as like, you know, Athol about twelve thousand, you know, we are building a commercial base out there, but, you know, I have one person under me. But here, you know, there's a little more staff to oversee, it's forty thousand population, so I kind of like, it's almost like kind of supersizing. I feel, you know, my age and my, where I am in my career, that I'm kind of ready to handle that type of responsibility. And, you know, this gets back kind of Carol's question, and the first part is that, you know, I do wanna commit to being a place and and staying till, you know, the time that my daughter's into college. And I can, you know, eventually look towards that retirement stage. But that's, you know, again, ten, ten plus years out, given she's in second grade.
So I, I appreciate hearing all of your past experiences, let me take you to the future a little bit. And assuming you were given this position, describe for us, if you would, how you go about transitioning to the position in your first six months or so? How do you assess operations, staff, determine your goals, things like that?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question, you know, I think I, poking the website a little bit, I see, you know, getting your zoning bylaws out there. Do you have like a series of different amendments that are gonna update over the years? But, you know, I noticed like the zoning bylaw was thirteen, that's posted online, I wanna go make sure, you know, it's what's presented to the business community and residents wanting one of the properties. Is that make sure that indeed the current zoning is updated up there? And, you know, what I've developed over the years, other communities, like probably in Athol, I actually did that as well, too, is make checklist. So like if, you know, a site plan's gonna be filed to to the board, you know, everyone knows, including myself, you know, things I need to look for. And, you know, maybe you have it already, but, you know, it's not evident from the website. So I wanna kind of go assess, you know, kind of what's available for, you know, helping to review process. You know, obviously, wanted to see what applications are before your board or kind of come before the board in the near future, be that way, I'm aware of those. I can be ready to kind of help review and get those through ultimately to the to the approval process. I wanna learn about some of the mayor's initiatives and help try to, you know, be part of the team to move those forward. And then, you know, as I kind of get to that kind of, those tiers, go to see, you know, what are some of the issues I see from the zoning, you know, I think I talked a little bit about this last time. But is there, is there certain uses that the community wants to incur, but perhaps by special permit, or there's some other process to kind of, you know, there's a hurdle involved? I think I explained last time the process, in Aspham, to develop that GFA credit union across town halls, took over a year and it's like, it shouldn't have. And no, everybody wanted it, it's just because the zoning was like very difficult to work with and there was all these non-conformities. So that was actually accomplishment, I didn't mention before, but, you know, ultimately in Aspham, we changed the Village Center zoning even after I left. They hired me as a consultant to help kind of get that through the town meeting up there. So I thought that was, that was something I'd wanna help try to promote with you guys as well.
Okay, thank you.
Eric, you know this competition for the job, right?
Yeah.
So what differentiates you and why should we choose you?
Well, obviously, you know, competition as for experience wise, but I think, you know, I've worked, you know, in Massachusetts for a number of years, understand how the land use laws and regulations work, which are particular to them, in particular, too. Massachusetts, I've also, I think, developed a good relationship with a lot of folks from different state agencies, especially Department of Housing Development, Mass Development. I was actually at a downtown summit today for planners and other types and municipal folks. It was put on by Department of Housing Development today, like Jay Ash spoke and, you know, it was really interesting learning about some of the, you know, issues that are sort of commonality facing downtowns and also some of the tools that are actually in the toolbox to help fix it, fix it. So I mean, you know, so I think that's something I could bring to the table, you know, I build up a relationship with the folks from Mass Development to Policy Development. You know, a number of years working with developers and engineers, I actually did my three summers in between the college years, actually, so I was a survey assistant. So it's kind of neat, you know, actually having the plans going out in the field and, you know, seeing with the new housing or most of the products we did at the time, where actually we're housing development. But there was some commercial involved and, you know, understanding how to read the survey plans. I know sometimes I find that, you know, that's a challenge for certain folks, so you'd be, read them, happy to help folks read them. But so I think those are some interesting tools that I, you know, I bring to the table.
I have one here, please describe a situation where you had a difficult decision and you knew that whatever you decided would make some groups unhappy.
Yeah, I mean, actually, right now, in Athol, this was very controversial, solar project, you know, we've had letters written to the planning board, you know, they were there, the paper, they're, the planning board should deny this project. It's like, just, you know, overlooks totally lake and it's, you know, there's actually subdivision proposal there in two thousand, mid-two thousand, which I do remember, seeing signs about that. This time they haven't got the signs out, but still, the people are still upset about it. But the guy hasn't asked for any waivers from the zoning bylaw. You know, there's nothing that, you know, I could recommend to the planning board or the town, you know, that they should just deny it, cuz people say they don't want it. You know, there has to be a valid reason, I wouldn't want to see the town, you know, sue for such a situation. So, you know, essentially, you know, working with my board, like, so Wednesday nights are kind of our decision night, you know. Could recommend that they basically put a lot of conditions on the project, we were able to kind of work with developer, decide about twenty feet down on the highest ridge line, so at least it minimizes the visibility. But but it's been a hard, it's been a hard one, cuz I kind of feel for the people and, but at the end of the day, it's got a subdivision that I had, talking about in Aspham, back in around Taj Medallon. You know, you're losing for asking any waivers. wasn't asking any waivers, there's no, you know, nothing varying off the subdivision rules, regulations, we did learn from that process and I think hopefully we're going to learn a little bit in Athol too, that, you know, there's certain things that maybe we could actually require as part of the process, help assess it or maybe cite things differently, but that's kind of what, you know, that's what I can recommend to town proactively moving forward.
So, that'd be my follow-on question, from this project, do you have some specific recommendations where you could make to your, your town bylaws, your town bylaws, to your town bylaws that would help the next project?
Yeah, I think one thing we're going to let you take a look at is, you know, maybe trying to prohibit, prohibit solar's array on steep slopes, you know, whether it defines 10% or what, I think that's something we're seriously going to look at and try to take to the town meeting, you know, to maybe in Athol next year, but I hope that they would still do it anyways, in the town for, because it's an important issue, and as well as try to do some better like site visualization tools, some of them I think we still need to actually think about how they could be developed, I remember when at Abraham, we had a provision in our cell tower bylaw, they had to do one of those balloon tests and they were going to put a cell tower up at the Powder Mill, Powder Hill, it was the first actually true settlement center for Abraham, the Virgil Common was, and so they had to put those balloon tests up, the cell tower never ended happening, but right now, we don't have anything like that exactly for the, for the large solar arrays and we tried to do these balloon, I mentioned balloon tests, but got frustrated, because the guy actually with the Dollar Tree or something like that, we've got those little silver balloons and so we're trying to find, you can't see it through the woods, looking across the lake and someone sort of gave me a picture of it and it thinks like half the flated, but, you know, we tried to, we tried to improvise on the fly, you know, that's about as best as we could do at this stage, but somehow, some way, I'm sure we can figure out something to do, something like that for solar projects.
Some of that's kind of sense, right?
Yeah, there is, yeah, I mean, there is actually some common sense.
I'll make your recommendation to the town of Metapoyza.
Okay.
Okay, questions for us?
Do you have any questions, Chris?
Um, yeah, I did actually have some. I know, I've had a couple of experiences coming here before, learning about some of your projects currently, you're being undertaken, I know like your preliminary plan was filed by Willard Road recently, but, and maybe this is something that the mayor, or maybe the answer, but I was kind of curious, like, how do you, because you're entitlement community under CBG and so you get allocated so much money, actually I think it's directly through HUD, at the federal level you guys work with, but is there like a process, a place to help with the projects, we are going to be working on, you have a committee and what?
We have a committee and it, it changes, right? I mean, in, we did a lot of housing projects, doesn't seem to, interest rates are so low now that, and, and some of them were grants, that by the time we got a bank that would help us finance it so they could pay us back, is what would happen is you borrow the money, as long as you own the house, you don't have to pay it back.
Okay.
So, then we started more of a loan program, but by the time we got to do that, the interest rates are so low, you just go to any bank, right? But, the caveat to that, there was a benefit to that, is a lot of elderly that were trying to remain in their homes, things like roofs and, and heating systems were, and handicapped accessible issues came up and so we've spent a lot of time replacing boilers and, and roofs and all kinds of situations, for veterans as well, as they age out and want to stay in their homes as long as they can and that's, that's, you know, then we do the typical thing, we have the Spanish Center and the whole list of people that, you know, we help fund, but there's not a whole lot of money.
Yeah, I know, it's just a big problem, that's been shrinking over, you know.
Right.
Over time and, I know that you guys at the mechanic street have been focusing on French Hill, that's one thing I learned about that.
We tried, you know, but again, not a lot of people come through the door to borrow money for, you know, it's to be siding and rehab of a, a unit, but, but then you're limited on how much you can charge for the unit, so all those kind of things went away with the good economy and so it's changed, but in a good way, because I think we, we help a lot of people that are low and moderate, who, you know, own a home and maybe can't afford to do some of the things that need to get fixed and then we partner with other agencies, Mass Save and other things to, you know, keep them in their homes, so it's, it's worked out, it's shifted, but it's still a lot of paperwork.
Yeah, that's one thing I learned, that's why I think there's, yeah, it's, you, you need the staff that you have to process the application.
A lot of time you have to spend on CBG.
Let's see here, since I know that now, but this, this stage of you guys, I'm sure maybe when you can share maybe, you know, more about the benefits package you have that kind of offer, you know, it's probably pretty standard, but, but that's one thing I never asked before, because I haven't got to this stage yet.
Yep, okay, well, we offer to get two weeks vacation beginning January and we have 12 vacation days, I'm sorry, a couple of days.
Yeah.
Two personal days a year that you use by the end of the year, 15 sick days a year.
Pretty generous, yeah.
Seventy-five, we have Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Yep.
We have a family plan.
I forgot to bring the, I have some paperwork on the medical plans that we offer and the dental and the pension and I can always email.
Okay, yeah, that's fine, I can follow you that way. That sounds good and, and I know you've been, without your, your, you know, your previous director for, for since the summertime and just kind of curious, when is the decision expected by, you know, I know you're probably.
Tomorrow.
Today and tomorrow.
Okay.
We're, we're, we're on the final phases right now, Eric, okay? So, that's why this, we have in this meeting, it's a, it's an open meeting, the door is open if somebody walks in, that's part of the, the state law and your final meetings for a position like this, you have, they have to be open, okay? Now, discussion has to be open also, so, so that's what we're working towards and like you said, it's been, we, we had, did have an interim person here for, for a while, but that person is, is now gone and so we'll look at the full position, because I have to come here to the city hall to walk up to figure things out, really, it's, it's just something, it's, it's just one of the, you know, the, the department needs, needs a permanent head to work to get things done and there are a lot of things that, that I just, you know, people, that have to be taken care of and it only can be taken care of by a, a professional person in the job, so that's really what we want to, we want to get their fills up for the betterment of the city.
Understand, yeah, I'd be if I just offered this, if my board was, chose a candidate, I wouldn't want to give a three weeks notice period to buy the community, you know.
Well, that's typical, we understand that, in any way with looking, being offered the job with the.
The thing is, the staff knows their stuff and honestly, there's a whole lot of supervision in any department, it's a team effort, I don't have to supervise the people at work, I don't have to supervise, you know what I'm saying, I mean, I don't, very, you know, you do, you lead board, right? So, you lead board, very little supervision that goes on, because people know their jobs, you'd be surprised the kind of support you get around here, you know, from that, we have a law firm, Copman and Page, that's who we use.
I've worked with them, actually with my questions, yeah.
And, and Charan and the whole crew down there, unbelievable.
Yeah.
So, that's a great support system.